All right. We will go ahead and call this special workshop of the Yuba City Council to order. And this meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Councilmember Harris.
He's en route. And if we can start off tonight, and I'd like to ask Ms. Lynn Hale to leave this in the pledge.
Pledge of Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. We're going to go to the only items on the agenda tonight, which is our proposed fiscal year 2223 operating budget and capital improvement project budget. Before we get started tonight, I've asked our city attorney, Mr. Shannon Chaffin, to go ahead and give us a brief overview as far as the order and how the special workshop meetings flow. And then we'll be doing this at the next couple of meetings because we've noticed there seems to be a little bit of confusion with people that aren't used to the parliamentary procedures and stuff. So we just want to make sure everybody's well informed with how the meetings flow. And Mr. Chaffin, will you go ahead and give us that order tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The process is generally governed by Rosenberg's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure and the Brown Act. The process under Rosenberg's Rules is the agenda item is called, as the mayor has just done for the agenda item. Following that, a presentation is made. This is typically made by staff, Spencer Morrison and the finance team there, and I imagine they'll be making the presentation this evening. Once the presentation has been made, there are questions and initial discussion by the city council. It's an opportunity for the council to follow up and to ask very specific and detailed questions if they so desire. After that, the mayor will open it up for public comment. Notice, I said that this is an opportunity for public comment to the city council. While questions can be asked to the city council, there is no right to a question-and-answer process. It's an opportunity for the council to receive comment from the public. Comments are directed to the city council and to the chair. They should not be directed to staff or other members of the public. Public comment is enclosed when there are no other people who would like to speak. The item then returns to the city council for it to ask any final questions, to discuss amongst themselves, and to take action as warranted. Now, as a final note, special meetings, while they're similar to regular meetings in many ways, there are some differences regarding limits on general public comment, which you will note this evening, we do not have a general public comment item on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Tonight's presentation will be given by Spencer Morrison, who's our finance director, and Lynn Hale, who is our accounting manager, as well as Mr. Ben Moody, who is our Public Works and Development Services Director. Before we hand it over to you, we do have our ad hoc committee as well, which is Councilmember Boomgarden and Vice Mayor Kirchner. Would you guys like to make any comments before we get into the budget workshop tonight? Vice Mayor.
Through the mayor, thank you. So this being my first budget ad hoc, it was a lot of listening and learning, but I think most importantly, it was about putting things in a framework. I think, well, I know one of our most important responsibilities is taking care of the money of the city and making sure we have enough at the end. Having said that, we're looking down the gun barrel of 8%, 9% inflation, gas, and increasingly competitive job market for our employees in addition to other concerns. So I think it's our responsibility to err on the side of being safe rather than...I think we need to be conservative with what we have. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. We looked at other concerns that we've had all year long, one of which being the low inventory at the dealerships, which we didn't have during COVID, and we, the city, rep the rewards of that. And what we learned was even though it might look like there's no cars out there, there are, they're being sold, they just don't never, they don't make it to the parking lot. And so that was a positive takeaway. So taking these, all these, these items into consideration, Councilmember Boomgarden and I sat down, and I think we were able to make some suggestions to the city that were pertinent, and I think we'll follow up on tonight. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Just to not be redundant, echo the vice mayor's comments. This was the fourth year of budget ad hoc committees for this group. And the initial goals and objectives of those of the first year, of course, was to just get into this thing that was the city budget. And I believe it was Mayor Harris at the time and Councilman, yeah, whatever your name is, Shaw, thanks. And so they were the initial, the initial two that jumped into that. And the next couple of years, it was the now mayor, Shaw, and myself. And each year, I think we dove in a little deeper and a little deeper. And this year was probably the deepest dive. And I know that that likely caused a little bit of anxiety for the department heads and for Mr. Morrison, but I would say that, you know, the bell was ringing, I answered the bell. And we had excellent presentations by those of you in the, out here in the audience, department heads, appreciate the opportunity for you to take a look at the budget and provide realistic and professional recommendations regarding the ability to pay for things and things that we wanted to do. So some of the cornerstones of this year's budget, I think, are trying to restore or enhance services that had either had to have been pushed back because of COVID or, and I don't want to say overlooked, but there are just some things we couldn't do as a city. And I think this budget begins the process of restoring a lot of those services back to our community. We were conservative in our approach because we are mindful of what's going on financially in the United States of America. But I think you will see through Mr. Morrison, Ms. Hale's presentation as well as the others is that we have done a really good job of holding reserve, of minding the public's money, and setting ourselves up for even for the future, which could be a bit uncertain. And I think that, appreciate the work of Vice Mayor Kirchner. It was drinking through a fire hose, I think, looking at this thing called a city budget, but he answered the bell as well. So anyway, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we, at the beginning of this, acknowledge the work of our finance department and the department heads because they did really come to the table with something that I think, you know, that we'll all have to take a look at and make recommendations where necessary. But I'm very proud to say that they did, in my opinion, anyway, and I've done a lot of city budgets, they did a really good job. So thank you. Thank you.
I will start off by just saying thank you to our ad hoc committee, first of all, for the work you guys have done. As you've said, we've, I've sat on it a few years, and it's a lot of work, but not near the work that two of you and your team put together. So thank you, guys, for diving in because it's a huge commitment, but thank you to all the work. I know all the late hours, the weekends, the 27 and 1/2 hour days, I get it. On behalf of the council, thank you. But before we get started, the one thing I can say is unlike other governing bodies, I can rest assured this governing body is in lockstep with you in understanding the budget. So with that, thank you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I am presenting you with a review of the fiscal year 2223 operating budget for the general fund and a summary of the enterprise funds. Joining me is Lynn Hale, accounting manager and responsible for coordinating, stewarding, and building this budget. I'm also excited to introduce your new accounting manager, Deanna Pope, who's sitting behind me. Welcome, Deanna. Thank you for being here. At the end of the general fund section, I will outline some recommendation, actually at the end of the, at all of my sections, I will be outlining some recommendations from the ad hoc committee and of mine, and taking your questions about the fund. And then, as you mentioned, and Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director, will be presenting the CIP. Budget process. So the departments identify needs to best serve the community and provide current year and current year-end projections and communicate budget needs in the coming year, providing guidance on the direction to implement council's direction on community priorities. Finance works mostly behind the scenes to provide information to the departments, city manager and city council, gather projections, proposed budgets for every division, calculate, evaluate, and verify available funds, and assemble everything gathered into a usable document. The budget ad hoc committee takes a 30,000-foot look, sometimes lower, at the city finances and practices, and helps guide staff's recommendations to city council from a policymaker's perspective. The city manager is charged with implementing council's vision and ensuring tax and tax and ratepayer dollar support the community in the manner that they were intended. I also want to acknowledge the city's department heads for submitting reasonable and responsible budget projections and proposals that fell in line with the current, the city's current financial position. So we are expecting a nearly $4.1 million operating surplus once we close the books for July fiscal year 2122. We are looking at savings from vacancies, but we're also looking at supply chain issues that make it difficult to buy stuff. Try to buy a pickup right now. That was in 2021, and 2122, it repeats. We're still having supply chain issues and difficulty making some of the big purchases, which adds to the surplus, the expected surplus. The council, with staff's recommendation, did add positions during the fiscal year, and that does add costs. Sales tax is starting to flatten a little bit, although we're seeing, you'll hear later, we're seeing, you know, still pretty robust sales tax compared to these quarters last year on a cash basis. Vacancies persist. There are a lot of vacancies. We have a very big list of open positions. Human Resources is doing an amazing job at recruiting, but there's only so much they can do to pull bodies in. I know that Finance has had trouble getting the right fit out of a couple of our recruitments. And then cash on hand, overall, is expected to grow. As we continue to have vacancies and difficulty making some of the big purchases, we do expect cash on hand to grow. So we are looking at a structural surplus ongoing. It's very small this year, but we still have a balanced budget. And you can see that as you compare the revenue, revenue increases, and the expenditures and expenditure increases, we still have a small balanced budget, a small structural surplus. The revenues have strengthened pre-COVID, but as the council members on the ad hoc committee mentioned, that we do have, we are trying to bring forward improvements to our programs and restore back to pre-COVID service levels. These are the reserves and discretionary funds. So as we talk about these reserves and that they are discretionary in the general fund, I do want to just remind the listeners that each one of these funding sources, except for maybe Healthy Cities, has an intended purpose. So while council does have discretion over these funding sources, it comes at a cost of not being able to replace vehicles or improve our pension position, et cetera. The Healthy Cities reserves are kept at 15% of the budget expenditures, recalculated at the adoption of each budget for the following fiscal year. 15% is a minimum, and if we need to ever use these reserves, council should expect a plan to build, expect a plan to build them back to their proper levels. As I mentioned, council does retain discretion to redirect and spend general funds, no matter where they are. So I've listed these other balances, other than the Healthy Cities Reserve. While council has discretion of these funds, again, they have a purpose, and there's an opportunity cost that we must consider. We expect to add $565,000 to the Healthy Cities Reserve in 2223. These are your Yuba City budget for the general fund allocations. Shows where the city's general fund dollars typically go. City council's priorities are public safety and infrastructure maintenance, and that is where just a little less than 3/4 of the city's general fund dollars are spent by department, by budget. The percentages in this slide change only slightly from year to year, which is what you would expect since these are, since these areas continue to be the long-term priorities of the city. This slide shows the graphical changes of the total general fund revenues over time. There are 10 years of actual historical results here, the fiscal year 22 projected and the fiscal year 23 proposed budgets. While actual revenues are proposed at 48.7 million, the total is inflated by the anticipated transfer in, or 8.7 million. So transfers from other funds do count as revenues in this number. These are the largest revenue changes for the general fund, and they include sales tax, which is expected to increase over what was budgeted in fiscal 2122. I have an additional slide showing more information later on sales tax revenues. Building permits have been strong, and the revenue should grow by around $450,000 by department estimate. We're anticipating an uptick in TOT from new hotels coming on, hopefully in the next, in the coming fiscal year. And then just, you know, the further reopening of COVID. We get our, we get our waves of our spikes, but they seem to be becoming fewer and farther between. Yes?
Is this the new number or the delta?
That is the increase.
The delta?
Yeah. The Safer Grant ended this fiscal year. That did have an impact on the budget, and the master tax exchange agreement payment increased nearly $100,000. All other items combined, all other items combined result in a reduction to revenues of about $456,000. This slide shows the status of sales tax revenues, shows the most recent four quarters that we have data for. We budgeted for a 5.2 increase in fiscal year 2223. That may be conservative, however, we are not sure how manufacturing issues and economic factors will affect consumers this fiscal year. With the third payment of this current quarter arriving this week, this last week, the first two receipts on a cash basis of the quarter, we get three receipts per quarter typically, the first two receipts are nearly 18 and 1/2% higher than the same, the first two receipts of the same quarter in 2021. So we're still getting in pretty strong numbers, but that doesn't mean that's going to hold through the end of the fiscal year necessarily. The, this is a similar slide for the general fund expenditures, including actual results for 10 years, along with the 22 and 23 proposed, 22 projected and 23 proposed. This is broken down for each year into categories of salary and benefits and MS and S with the, if I can hit it from here. Look at that. Those are the, those are the MS and S. So you can see that it's just a fraction of the overall general fund expense compared to salaries. They are growing. This is a list of the largest general fund expenditure changes from the 2122 budget to the 2223 budget. Roughly $2.5 million in salaries and benefits increases reflect the increase in cost of staffing, existing positions, and additional positions requested to meet demands of city priorities going into the next fiscal year. Staff is recommending new or reclassified positions based on council priorities in all departments, and we'll cover that later. Other payroll changes include step increases and benefit increases. Staff does not expect an immediate budgetary impact from new positions, knowing that it will take time to fill vacant positions and will likely always have at least a 10% vacancy factor. The internal service fund changes are mostly made up of property and liability coverage premium increases, very large again this year. And staff is recommending ongoing material supply and services increases of $239,000 in one time of $134,000. That's the, that is the line in the middle. Those two amounts make up this amount here. So this represents the cost of per's retirement as a percentage of every dollar of payroll. Safety is in the red, so it's the top, the top line up there, and miscellaneous is in the blue. This is a blended composite rate of all the tiers, including the unfunded actuarial liability payment. We also call that the UAL, and it's based on CalPERS payroll cost estimates. This is only the employer section, portion, so it does not include the portion paid by our employees. These projected rates are based on actuarial reports as of June 30, 2020, put out by CalPERS in July of 2021, so it's the most recent information we have. Finance will update this information when new actuarial reports are received this summer. The assumption changes CalPERS has made in the past few years, which are increasing our UAL contributions at a sometimes alarming rate, though as we near the peak of the impacts of those changes for the miscellaneous plans, we must anticipate the next ones. And we actually had some, we're going to see some, probably see some little bit of lower costs projected because of the 21% investment returns CalPERS booked last, last year. So those would be, those would be coming. So part of that funded a reduction in our discount rate going from 7% to 6.8%, but the rest of that will impact our unfunded liability and our costs.
So especially what you're saying is you think that's going to, you think that's going to go below 6.8%?
It, it, no. What I'm saying is that that has already occurred, but we haven't seen the results of that in, yet in the actuarial, actuarial report. Whether it be this, the summer or next summer, that, there's usually a two-year lag. So I think, I think they will consider this year, too, that the actuarial reports that come out, because those are going to be for next fiscal year. So we should see those changes then. So we will see a little bump down, and then in their, in this graph, and then we might see a little bump back up again. But it is definitely, definitely flattening out.
Do you have any discussion about what's happening with the stock market and the return at this point?
My understanding is the return is very poor.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying. It'll bump down, and then in the next, for the next year, when it, when that, so that we won't see, we won't see this, this calendar, last calendar year's result until two, two reports from now, actuarial reports, before it hits. So we'll see a nice little, nice little dip in the graph that'll pick back up again for sure. And what happens after that, who knows? The assumption changes CalPERS has made, let's see, I maybe already read that. We do prepay UAL, and so we receive an interest rate discount from CalPERS. Rather than paying 1/12th each month, we pay it all at one time. It saves us a lot of interest on the front end. And Finance does convert the UAL payment to a percentage of payroll for analytical purchase purposes, since we know what our total estimated payroll dollars are for each of the first tiers. So we do build in that, that UAL. And that's, we do create a composite rate for comparison purposes. So this is just a slide that I've shown you before, and it really just shows how the trajectory of payroll cost increases has, has changed over time. There was a time, a period of time where year after year after year, the per's reports were telling us a different forecast, like very, very, very different from the year before. So these lines were really far apart. At some point, I don't know how useful this slide's going to be, because you can see that their projections are only slightly apart these days. I've got, I've got four years up there. I've only, I've only shown you the numbers of the most recent actuarial, which is that 2021 actuarial. But you can see that it's climbing, but they're continuing to project that the lines are going to flat, just like you saw in this slide. The lines are starting to flatten the farther we get out, the, especially in safety, there are so many Peppera, you know, the Pension Reform Act employees, so employees hired after January 2013, in safety. We have very, very young departments, and I think they're very, I think that might even be part of the nature of those, of those fields, is that they end up being younger departments. But you can see in the miscellaneous, it's, it's a little bit flatter throughout, but it's consistently climbing. And that has a lot to do with the unfunded liability for your more seasoned employees that were hired prior to January 2013. So that's really what I have on a, on a, kind of on a summary basis for the, for the general fund. In your, in your packets, and there are packets in the back for public as well, I had included the changes that we made by division, kind of line item changes that either departments requested or ad hoc recommended. So if you've had time to review those and you have questions on those, I'll take those questions now, or we can, we can do it at the end. Doing okay? All right? Moving on? There's a lot going on in this slide. I know that, but it, I just, I like kind of how concise it is, how it shows, how it shows these three really important...
Bridge.
I'm sorry?
Bridge.
It looks like a bridge? It looks like a suspension bridge? Yeah, yeah. It gives you three relevant pieces of information in one place, year to year. So it does, it does show a dip in revenue, then an increase from rate increases before a slight decline this year and next, while expenses continue to increase steadily. The proposed operating revenue is forecast to decline 6.9% compared to expenses, expense increases of 17.3%. Increasing expenses are contributed to the declining, are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above 1.2, which is required in the, in the bond debt covenants. And that we're forecasting that ratio to be 1.73 in 2223. So we're coming up on a time of conservation. Conservation is, has a, it saves water, but it doesn't save revenue. And so as we, as we conserve and we do the right thing and support the state effort, we are asking people to use less, and that, that's going to have an impact on the revenue until we get a couple of years of rain behind us, or a change in pattern. And we never know at this point. The last one, I think, was about, last drought was about four years, three or four years, and maybe longer, and we don't, we don't know what this one's going to be. The last drought was a bad one, one that ended in, what, 2016? Yeah, so.
Mayor, do you recall, I mean, it's important to conserve water. With that being said, do you recall the potential revenue shrinking that was experienced, you know, kind of a, based on the conservation of those efforts?
During the last drought? I don't, I don't have that number off the top of my head. Maybe city manager or public works director might be able to chime in?
I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but if you look at the graph, we had implemented increases to the revenues going back to 2011 and up through around 2018, and then we held for a period of time in terms of rate increases. But you can see that 14, 15, 15... But you can see that 1415, 1516, 1617, that 1415 actually dipped compared to 1314, and that was kind of the first year that we really implemented the significant conservation measures. 1516 and 1617, our water allocation was slightly higher. And so we had, we still had conservation measures in effect, but that 1415s were when we really had the, the patrols out issuing citations. And so you can see in that dip in the revenues, that was a, a direct relation to the conservation efforts. And if we hadn't had to have done that, you would have continued to see a steady increase in those revenues.
Okay. That's helpful. That's very helpful. Knowing that one competes against the other, you know, and that's a whole other subject, but to be really aware of that aspect of, of the potential challenges that we may face without, I mean, we don't have all the information here in the next year, or at least, yeah, I'm about a year out, but my question was answered. Thank you.
Bye.
Anyone else? I do have one follow-up, and it might be for you, Ms. Langley. Going back to the 1314, 1415 year, it looks, from the graph, roughly about a 10% dip. And over the weekend, the governor started talking about more restrictions and things going on, and the analysis was that, was, that I heard, was it tends to affect more of the metropolitan areas than the rural areas when, when the governor, you know, does the things he's talking about. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you see anything with what was released over the weekend that would be further harmful to us and water restrictions and further cut, you know, a 20, 30% type of revenue drop?
So fortunately for us, our water billing structure is based upon a base rate for a certain water allocation, and so that's a fixed revenue amount. And so what's really impacted then is the, the variable revenue, which is once you go over that base rate. And so that's where conservation really hits us, is when we get into that variable rate. For residential customers, yes, it, it's, you know, which a, a good portion of our water revenues are from our residential customers. It does have an impact, but like a 20% conservation does not equate to a 20% reduction in the revenues. It's, it's quite a bit less than that. So as long as, you know, for instance, like SunSuite, as long as SunSuite's still operational and it doesn't impact SunSuite from a processing standpoint, then, you know, as long as those large customers aren't impacted significantly, because they are paying a much larger portion of our variable revenue, then I wouldn't expect it to be too much different than what's projected through the proposed budget. Ben, would you agree with that?
Would you step all the way to the mic to say yes?
Diana nailed it, as, as far as we're, when we were doing the water projections, because right when we were putting the budget together, we were getting hit with the executive orders and trying to figure out how that impacted our budget with, with costs going up and available water and the water conservations. And we tried to look back at those years to try to get an idea of how that was projected. It was right there, kind of in that 10%, but then you gotta offset it with the, the increases in rates and, and then where that lands. And it was really, as, as Diana stated, with, with our rate structure. But you're using less water and you're paying more money.
Right.
So this next slide shows available, available water fund cash is, is declining as conservation will decrease revenues. Declining net revenues will put more pressure on debt coverage also. You'll see details for the CIP, details for CIP for water in the next presentation and what Director Moody's gonna cover. I want to point out, too, that in your, in your packets, I did, we did, included water and wastewater performance. They actually do give you the numbers year by year. They don't go back to 1314. I think they go to maybe 1718, but you can see some, kind of some recent history and see how we, how the, the numbers have fallen out for, for water and, and for wastewater. Those are both in that, in the packet. So similar slide for wastewater. Increasing revenues are not quite keeping up with the expenses that also continue to increase steadily. Like water, increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above 1.2, 1.20, of course, with a ratio of a 1.73. Wastewater doesn't have the same, that, that conservation won't have the same impact on wastewater, especially for residential and the smaller users. It'll be in the scenario that Diana, I'm sorry, that Ms. Langley described where our large, really large industrial users, if something happens to their, their operations, and that's where we're gonna see big, big impacts to wastewater. And a, a similar slide. You can see a very large spike for 1920 with wastewater plant improvements. That's where we approved a bond in the 2018 bond, a $23 million bond to make wastewater plant improvements. That's what that big purple spike is there. And the spike in 1314 was probably similar to that. Cash reserves are more steady in times of conservation, as I mentioned, and again, I'll show, you'll see CIP in the next presentation. So this is a summary of the vehicles requested as part of the capital acquisitions requested, requested by departments. This is an excerpt of pages in the adopted budget, or in the proposed budget now, should these be approved. Some heavy, more expensive vehicles listed will be considered for lease financing and will be part of a lease RFP in the coming months. About 100 pickup vans and sedans have been flagged to be considered for leasing through enterprise fleet as well, which you all are well aware. Just that they're, they're still in the same state as when you gave a nod to go that direction, because we have not been able to get them in house. I think we've taken delivery of still, I think we're still at one Tahoe that we've been able to take delivery on. Orders were due, they were open for Tahos for one day last, last week, I think it was Thursday. They opened and closed. So nationwide, if you didn't get your Ford or your Chevrolet Tahoe order in, you missed the window. And so your, your staff got their orders in. So orders are placed, just waiting, I don't know if it's microchips at this point, just waiting for them to get, get manufactured and shipped. These are the capital acquisitions, probably pretty small from the, those in the back far corner, sorry about that. But these are all the system replacements and, and changes that the, that IT is recommending. And you can see that it's about, has a value of about $700,500. These are the capital acquisition requests for water and wastewater. Water's at the top. They need a, they're requesting a piece of equipment that will test, test vibration and pumps, which will help them diagnose coming problems in a, in a pump. And then you can see the items that wastewater has, is recommending for replacement as well, to the tune of just under $300,000. So the ad hoc committee made some, had some great recommendations through their, their deep dive look at the, at the budget requests and, and budgets themselves, which resulted in reduced department requests by just under half a million dollars. They made recommendations for mostly equipment or possibly some services to be moved to the current fiscal year, as we are anticipating a surplus. And they reduced personnel request just under $100,000. Now, that was in the general fund, that's in the general fund. In the water fund, they recommend reducing department requests by $20,500, and wastewater reduced by about $10,800. And again, this detail is, the details for these recommendations are in your packet.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. Through the mayor, he's gone, through the vice mayor. Just mostly for the council, but certainly for anyone else, one of the things that, that the vice mayor and I looked at when it came to the recommendations that were up on the screen, if you could go back to the general fund. So again, balancing the need to, you know, restore and, in many cases, not many cases, a lot of cases enhance services, but at the same time, taking a look at history. So there were a, a number of reductions discussed in requests from department heads, but there was also a number of increases based upon history that were made. And I, I think that the philosophy that I would like to, to just make sure the council's aware of, that I believe the ad hoc committee brought forward, is we want the budget to look as real as, as it can. And so some of the scenarios would appear that, okay, we may need this, and have the flexibility to say, okay, well, we're gonna budget what you, what you have used historically or what you think you have used historically, and if we need to add to that, then that's what we have Healthy Cities reserves for contingency funds for, rather than just have money kind of squirreled away someplace for, for a what-if. So I think that probably makes up a lot of that 444. It wasn't stuff that I, that I think that was frivolous, frivolous asked by the departments by any means. It was just, let's see what happens here. We're in a conservative, looking at the financial stuff, but it, it does, it does rely on this council being sensitive to the needs of the department heads, if and when they come up with something that isn't necessarily planned for, or a new need that, that we wanna support.
So I'm making other recommendations, and these are, these are not new recommendations. A lot of these have been approved in the past or desired in the past. One of, one of them is to make an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS, $500,000 from the general, general fund money that's in the pension stabilization trust. So this isn't, this isn't writing a check, city writing a check. This is the city authorizing a transfer from our pensions, pension stabilization trust for a payment to go to CalPERS. If that, that makes, makes sense. When we do that, because what we're, our best bang for our buck is, is to put that money towards miscellaneous plans, to, to make that ADP, additional discretionary payment to miscellaneous plans. We also need to pull monies from the other funds that have miscellaneous employees, which include water, wastewater, animal services, and fleet, fleet maintenance. So that balance would be somewhere between $350,000 and $375,000. We're working, we're working on that number now, but right in that ballpark. And I'll have a number for the, for the resolution for the, on adoption night. Then the other item I wanted to talk about is, we do anticipate having this, this $4 million surplus. That's an estimate. Could happen, it may not happen, but I'm, I'm recommending earmarking like around three and a half, three, three and a half million of that for future labor increases, just to make sure that while we, while we have the money today, may not have the money tomorrow, we wanna try to set that, set that money aside in reserve for, for future increases. And then the, the last thing is something that's become controversial over in the past couple of years, especially last year, is how we, what we do with the, the remainder of the surplus. My recommendation is to put it into the general fund CIP, but because this is all up for discussion, I threw a symbol in there rather than a number of what that's gonna be. So just to remind you, the way, the way surpluses have happened in the past probably four budget years is council would authorize by resolution for us to pay, pay the things we have to pay out of the surplus. Like we need to get that general, use the surplus to get the general fund Healthy Cities reserve back up to 15% based on the new budget. And, and, you know, maybe we, we've, in the past, we've funded a landscape maintenance district, bring them out of the, out of the red and into the black. And then the remainder was split, there's some other transfers as well, but the remainder was split 50-50 between pension stabilization fund and, and the general fund. And we have a healthy pension stabilization fund this, this year, sitting at about $5 million right now from that earlier slide. And so my recommendation is to, just anything we have extra, put it into general fund CIP, because that is how we've been funding the general fund CIP for many, many years, more than, longer than just the, the four years that we've been doing this 50-50 split thing. So that's my recommendation, and I am definitely encouraging discussion.
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
After the vice mayor.
Spencer, so that first item, that ADP and the general fund, is, this is the fourth or fifth time the city has done this? Is that correct?
I think this would be the, maybe fourth. Fourth. Maybe we took one year off since we started doing it. It does also help to contribute to the, that flattening.
Sure.
That cost curve, because we're, we're, we're paying off our mortgage, we're making additional payments on our mortgage, so to speak. So, so it, it actually saves us in, in interest for that principal, because the principal that we're paying off will never cost us another interest payment again. Maybe new princ, there may be other principal that's added to it that's gonna cause us, you know, cost us interest, but that particular part will never cost us interest again, and that's the point.
Counselwoman.
Thank you. So our, on the CalPERS payment, annually, how much is it that we normally, just as a recall, or how much do we pay annually?
Around $10 million this time.
Mm-hmm. But our annual, excuse me, annual payment, as we're talking about here, what's the annual?
The additional payment.
Additional.
The additional discretionary payment. We've, we've been...
Thank you.
We've been recommending $500,000, council's been approving $500,000 out of the general fund, which has, it, it, the amount that that causes to come out of the enterprise funds changes depending on salary increases and salary benefits increases. So that number used to be in the 200-something thousand dollar range, and it's increased over time.
I think you kind of answered the question, so to give the additional $375,000, because that's the additional, right? You're not saying 500 plus 500 plus 300,000, you're saying just 500,000.
So the, the check owed to five different funds...
Right.
Will, will be in the tune of 875,000 or so. It won't be a check, it'll be, well, the, the, the payment to the ADP.
Correct.
To the miscellaneous ADP, so not the check. The payment, the $500,000 will be transferred from pension stabilization, and then we will write a check from the other four funds for 375,000.
Yeah, so, the, the, I think you kind of answered already the question, but just to be clear about it, that there, the benefit to give the additional $375,000 is to hopefully reduce that principal total amount, or just to help us, because we don't know what the percentage would be for the following year, right? It's always kind of one of those unknowns. What is the benefit for us as a city to give an additional $375,000 besides our commitment and requirement of $500,000 annually?
Our, our ultimate goal is to reduce our interest payment over time.
Okay.
So these are, they're, every time there's a change to CalPERS, it's, it's literally like a mortgage. It's a 20, it's amortized over, you know, we're paying for it over 20 years or 30 years, depending on the change. And so we're, we're, we're paying annual interest on our balance of each, each time there's a, there's dollars added to that, to that, to our unfunded liability, that those dollars for that year are tracked, and the interest is calculated on those dollars over time. So we can, so we're, our idea is to try to, to pay off the most expensive of those interest-wise, and try to, try to reduce our interest payment over time. and try to reduce our interest payment over time.
Which is a really good idea to handle the revenue and the expense on this. So thank you, I like that. Thank you very much.
Roger.
Yeah, Spencer, on the 875, if there's a way that we could actually pay a little bit more down on our UAL, it might be worth it, because as you was explaining earlier, it's not like a loan, it's not like a mortgage, because we're lagging two years behind, and what's coming in a couple of years because of the rates is going to be like a hard money loan, because they're going to spike really heavy after their numbers from this current year's market gets in, because PERS has not been doing well in their investments, because they're not nimble and they're moving a big ship with a pin, basically. It's very difficult. So any savings that we can reduce our UAL this year or next year before those extras get in, is there any, how close are we to getting some of those higher years paid off? Are they still, each of them in the millions, and what's our current UAL? It was around 70, it's been fluctuating, so.
Our UAL is lower, just because we've had some, we've had some kind of favorable events happen in the last couple of years, but we can anticipate that happening. So I recall our UAL was somewhere in the 50s, I think it's around, I believe it's around 57.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me, but it is lower than the 70, if you recall. But I don't, I don't, you know, I picture a page with 25 lines on it of these things that are being tracked, and so I just, that's all I see. I don't see the individual numbers in my head right now, but I can definitely get that before council and allow you to make a recommendation on the night of adoption.
That would be good, because if we can, whatever we can do strategically to try to knock out some of those higher years, if anything is within reach, we basically got a 24-month, 18 to 24-month window before we're going to get hit. So it would be good to see those numbers.
Sure, and what we'd like to do is, we'd like to reach out to our actuary, and just, rather than us say, well, we're pretty sure this is the best way to go, is have them do it mathematically for us and say, these are your, this is where you need your most bang for your buck. Typically in the more, the line items that have the longest payoff period, so if we have something that's a 20-year, 25-year, 30-year, then those are usually where, because those are going to be, we're going to be paying the most interest on those. So typically, we try to pay those off when we can. As far as going more than 500,000 on the, of general fund money, you have 5 million to, you know, 5 million dollar limit, you know, in the pension stabilization fund, that's how much you've saved. But we, to make that payment, we have to make the equivalent payment out of the utilities, so we have to really look at that carefully. And that's why I would love to go higher, but I don't want to stress out our public works.
No, you're reading my mind, and it's good. So, yeah, Ben's no problem.
The mayor?
But yeah, it would be good to kind of know those numbers in the long term.
If I could just ask one question, Mr. Morrison, because we have an item, a special workshop that's coming before council in August on a pension management policy, and whether or not it would be appropriate to hold off on, through the budget process, increasing anymore until we have that workshop, so that council can hear, you know, options that are available, and then if council were to choose to do an additional payment, then we could forward, you know, come forward after that to increase that.
Ms. Langley, I'm going to turn my head so I can speak into the microphone. I guess I can move the microphone.
Thank you, Spencer.
Hi. Are you recommending to hold off on the ADP altogether, or hold off on an increase to what the recommendation is?
Increase.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Through the mayor, I think your idea of an actuary asking for them to put that together is really a solid way to know what it really is at a point in time for us, because we can, I have differing information, mayor, about how CalPERS has done in the previous, I believe, cycle. Their earnings were very, very high, so I'll get that information and forward it to you, but the relativity to that with our unfunded liability really lies in the actuary where we're at, at the point, and what we need to pay back as a city, part of that contract agreement that we have with them, because that's how they run their business, and we want to make sure that people are getting the best service of their retirement, when they choose to retire correctly, and others. So I would be in favor of the actuary. Thank you.
Any other comments on?
Before we move on, Spencer, were you going to then move on to CIP, or did you have more related to this budget?
No, this would be, CIP would be next.
Okay, so just a couple of points to point out. In the actual operating budget packet, if you go to page five, which is the proposed changes for administration, one of the things that I would like to note is for meetings and events under the city council account, we're proposing to allocate $2,000 per council district. And I just want to bring that up, because this is a different direction that we're going with the districting, and so the ad hoc committee had recommended $2,000 per district so that we can hold meetings within each district, or, you know, whatever we need to do to have some of those community meetings. And then the other thing, just to point out, is the council professional development, the 62820, we're proposing to budget $36,000 in that account. If you recall, earlier this year in January, there's a discussion about cap to cap, and through this budget, we're proposing to budget for three council members to attend cap to cap, and then all council members to attend League of California Cities. And then there's also a small budget there that would be available for council members to attend other events. We would have to figure out the process in which the approval for council members to utilize those funds, but I just wanted to point out those two specific things, because they are different than what we've had before. And then if we could go to page 73 of the packet, which is the proposed personnel changes, this was really important as well, and we're very appreciative of the ad hoc committee, because each director recommended some new positions or reclassifications, and so this lists the proposed personnel changes through the budget. So you can see that we have a total of 11, basically full-time equivalent positions. And, you know, these are, these are very important positions. One thing, we're removing the untitled position within the city manager's budget, and then within, you know, finance, we're reclassifying some of the IT analysts to have an information system security analyst, and then an information technology analyst. In human resources, we're adding an administrative analyst, three. In development services, we're adding a plans examiner and a community services, development services technician. And then you can see with, also within the list, key, three new dispatchers for the police department, and Chief Baker can get up here and give you all the reasons why we need additional dispatchers. And then Chief Alexander is requesting a new fire safety inspector, so that would be two fire safety inspectors under the fire marshal. So I just wanted to call out these position requests as well.
Any questions from the council?
Two adding with the one that we have and then a new one, just to make sure I got that correct.
So be two total fire inspectors.
Two total, okay, thank you.
I just have a quick comment, mayor.
Okay.
We talked about the additional $2,000 per council person due to districting with the idea of doing town hall. Based on the last town hall, I went with two, with a county.
Yeah.
That amount might be a little high, because four people showed up, so, just a side note.
Any other questions? Okay. Couple that I have is, and doesn't matter, Mr. Morrison or the ad hoc, with all the personnel changes, did, how did that stack up with what the departments needed? Did they really all get what they needed to do the job? Because we've talked about it for, really, for the last four years. You know, we went in and talked about not hiring a position just because it's budgeted at a one, we really needed a three. Does this kind of help close that bookend to get the positions that we need in the best manner?
I believe that was the intent of the ad hoc, I'll let the ad hoc speak for themselves, but from a staff perspective, it certainly appeared that the department's requests were coming in with that very thought in mind, and that, taking that overall look, what does my, what does my department really need, what do my divisions really need to make this, you know, to better, best serve the public? And I feel like that was the ask. Now, as we mentioned, some of the positions were not granted. I believe their request was four dispatchers, and ad hoc settled on three, but Councilman Boomgarden's point, you know, I'll let him take it from here.
You can finish.
I was going to say, to his point, you know, it doesn't mean that the police department can't come back and say, we filled the three, still need that one, and appeal to the council in that way. And I think that would, that would be well received by this council, if I.
Yeah, there's not a lot more to add there. There was some, you know, lengthy discussions that the vice mayor and I had with each of the department heads with their proposals. Really, the only reason that we didn't do four dispatchers was not because there wasn't a credible request made, it was just the ability to hire them. And so to Mr. Morrison's comment, you know, if we get to a point where that need continues to exist and we can actually recruit, recruit, then I think they would come back to us and ask for that. But it was my impression in listening, and I don't want to speak for the vice mayor, it was my impression in listening to the department heads that they did take into consideration hiring, you know, the best possible person for the position, you know, with the appropriate, you know, job responsibilities and requirements, rather than just a warm body, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to add anything.
Okay. The only other question that I would have, and it's really, this one's really for the council, because we have scrutinized ourselves in many ways harder than a lot of the other departments, through the ad hoc and stuff, over the past few years, when we started looking at training budgets and our expenditures and stuff, when we were cutting the budgets of others, or they were asking for training, and we had a much larger budget from the five of us, and so we took those steps. This whole new thing with 2,000 per district and going to districting, here is my concern, and just toss it out here for discussion amongst us, but we're getting into new territory. What can those be used for? Do we have a policy established for that, as far as what will be using the meetings and stuff per district? And since this is new, and this is the first time districting and having that, do we want to look at developing policies and stuff first, or delay even the use of these until we are beyond the November silly season? Because we've heard from other people that have sat in these chairs that did some things, or had the appearance of doing things through 1201 Civic Center, and I want to make sure that we are above that fray. Not against getting out in the community, here, don't misread that, but is the timing correct? Do we budget for it now, but we put curbs on us to hold on until the silly season is over and move forward, and in the meantime, maybe develop policies and stuff as far as how that would be used, because you will have three that have districts at that point and still two at large. So I just bring this up for discussion, because I think we need to really think this one through, even though it's a small amount.
Well, through the mayor, Mark, I believe we did discuss the need for that, correct? Because the potential of abuse coming up in late summer or fall, so to the mayor's point, maybe, maybe we do bump this back to a non-election year. Because there, I'm sorry, Mark, because there absolutely is a real, there is a real value to this, as councilperson Espinola and I talked about, because we've been, we've been really frustrated recently, because we feel like the public hasn't been informed as much as we would like them to be. And so there's a real value to this, but maybe just putting this off a little bit, maybe the.
I don't disagree. I think that the reason that we discussed and put it forward was, recent history would clearly indicate the need for increased levels of communication with the folks that we serve. And that was the, at least that was the rationale for putting something. It's brand new. I don't have any problem putting some guardrails around it. It's a budget, I mean, it's in the budget, it could be whatever number, too, really, to be honest with you. We discussed that at some length, as well, as what would that be? But I do think there needs to be more opportunities for this council to get out in front of the folks that we serve, and for those folks that we serve to get out in front of the council. And this was, this was an opportunity for us to say, okay, we're going to put some, we're going to put some priority to this. How that all looks, I agree with you. You know, I do think it needs some structure around it. I would advocate leaving it in the budget, but to your point, perhaps pushing back on actual implementation until those guidelines or policies or what have you are put into place makes a lot of sense.
Okay. Counselor Harris?
A little bit, a little bit to the contrary, even though I understand the reason for structure, when we're going to be using the people's dollars, I don't think the so-called silly season should play into it. If we have an opportunity to communicate with our constituents and there's a need there, I think we should be trusted enough to police ourselves. And if we step out of line, if we start campaigning, using city dollars to effectively campaign, have a look at me moment disguised as a city event, then that's a problem. We can do that, and we can do that here publicly, and I will. But to assume that there's going to be abuse, then we shouldn't be sitting here if we're going to abuse money. So in principle, if it's, if there's a need, let's do it regardless of the election, but I do support at least something in writing some guidelines that if someone does happen to have a, you know, have a blind spot and step out of line, we can point to the page and say, this is kind of where our concerns are, so.
I agree with Councilman Harris and Boomgarden. I think that, and we had a nice conversation, the vice mayor and I, I do, I do have a deep sense of us wanting to really connect with our community, and as we branch out into these district areas, we are, each of us are very different in our way that we approach and how we reach to community, and that was one thing that vice mayor and I talked about. The, when we, pardon me, I'm getting over this, whatever I've had. I know, I've tested so many times, believe me, all negative. When we had one, one time in 2019, when we hosted at Boyd Hall that event, it was well-attended, which I shared that with vice mayor, and I don't know the changes in the last several, couple of years most to say, people have kind of changed in their own aspect of how they attend things, too, so that could be part of it. But I do believe that we have it in the budget, let's keep it there. Doesn't mean, I don't see any of us just quickly go start dipping into $2,000 budget and start just rapidly spending. I don't see any of us do any of that with the conferences that we go, with all of that. I see us to be very responsible, thinking about it, how we're going to use it for the benefit of the community and our city. It's not personal benefit. So 2,000 seems reasonable to me. Whatever's not used at the end of the year goes back into the, so it stays. It's not like we're, it's a refund to any of us. And to have the guardrails, I would say that the guardrails need to be a discussion between all five of us, because it's not an ad hoc of two, it should be an open discussion, and maybe look at other examples of other communities, and I know our city managers and our team is beginning and doing a lot of that. What others, you know, what are those guardrails that we all can agree to? But just because it's an election year, I personally don't think, I'm not going to stop going out and talking to community because it's an election. going out and talking to community because it's an election year. It's, it's not gonna, my behavior of that is not gonna change. So those are my thoughts. So I support for it to stay and we can bring it back with some guidelines, but we discuss it in an open session, all five of us together.
I mean, I, I think, well, I don't know, I can't speak for everybody, but I think that there's no intent to prevent any one of the other five of us, particularly the three of us, the reelection this year, to stop meeting with the community. I think the concern potentially may be the potential for someone to use city funds to have a campaign event disguised as a city event. And that would be a problem, a big problem.
And certainly that would, yeah, we, I think we all agree with that, Councilwoman Harris. So that's the, that's the concern. And have the guardrails.
Yeah, the, the reason for this wasn't in per se to remove it from the budget, but before we start enacting on it, there needs to be guardrails that are established by the five of us. And, you know, to your point, we're all out meeting with the public, but it's not what we're doing, it's the perception of what's being happened. So if the public starts perceiving this new budgetary item and now city hall is violating things because we know how silly that season can get, that was the point I was bringing up as to whether or not you, you know, what are the rules? What are the guidelines? Do we call it, you know, you proposed it 2,000 per district, but do we just give it general for right now and develop the stuff and then transition after November into so much per budget? It's, it, it's a good placeholder, but in my opinion, we need a little bit more wrap around it before we go in, you know, on July 1 and, hey, we want to do this. And that, that was the whole point of, we need to bring this up and talk about it for a few minutes. Anything else from anyone? All right. Any other questions? Is that clear as mud, Mr. Morrison?
I just made a note, keep it. I'll let you all work on that one.
Keep it, bumper rails, bumper guards.
So if there are no further questions, that's the end of the, the operating presentation. Ben, Director Moody has a CIP presentation for you. Do, it'll take us less than, well, we're ready right now. Do you want to, do we need to take a break or just keep rolling? It's only been an hour and a half, hour fifteen.
Is everyone good? Last roll.
Yeah. I'm still. Okay. Good evening. No, mine's pretty quick and high level, but we could definitely dive into the specifics on, at council's discretion. And so, so what do I got? Honestly, this is the fun budget, right? The only one that I really like out of all this is this. This is where you give me money and I get to go spend it next year. And so that is it. And so it definitely, it's a relatively, there's, there's a lot of money in there and a lot of projects, but in the scheme of things, if you compare to different cities, and we're relatively a small budget, but we do our best to program the money and look for grants and try to maximize that in a little, in those little projects are, are big projects to us. And so kind of high level, the CIP is broken down into different divisions. I'll go through with general projects, public safety, streets, water, sewer, and so, and facilities. And so really a couple highlighted here, it's really, the way you got this thing is there's current funding, kind of showing what we've been putting into the, the piggy bank over the years and then what we're proposing this year. These are some out years, kind of what we anticipate is, is how the project's gonna play out or anticipate if future needs to help with, with programming. But really, this is the big one that we're looking at for the year is through this, this is what you're putting into it this year. And so of the notable ones in the general projects is your general plan implementation and future update. And so those are, those are big documents, those are $2 million documents, if you do a whole entire update. But where the city's been is so we've been putting money into that account consistently over the years, so we just don't get knocked with a big $2 million bill. Over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of money that's come through the state for housing. And so we've, we've basically utilized $600,000 or are utilizing for, we just use for our housing update and a high level, a general, general plan update to work on our circulation model that we use some traffic impact fees on, but then we're implementing that into our traffic model. So we have an existing account and really this 165,000, that's grant money that we received from SAICOG through REAP funds to work on some zoning and housing updates that we're working through. So there's no general fund money. The other big project really is, this is all finance and IT, is that they're requesting 1.5 million to, to initiate the pay, an update to the payroll utility billing upgrade system. And so Spencer could definitely get into the weeds on that if there's any specific questions, but it's really, it's time for a system update.
Did the mayor ask a question?
Absolutely.
Because you're so accommodating. So to understand what the general plan, the, the current thought is that when we're gonna update this plan and when, remind me the date of the last plan and when are we projecting to update the plan? We've had.
So, so it's, it's, it's kind of a living document. It was, the last major overhaul was 2004, 2005. Recently, we just updated an element, and so it's broken down into different elements that have circulation, so your traffic, it, it has your housing, it has land use and some of these other required sections, plus you can have an optional section. And so, so since 2004, recently, we've just done a major overhaul on the housing update. And then we're doing an up, we're doing, updating with the associated land use. So when we change some of the housing stuff, stuff through the housing section of it, there's some, there has to be some land use changes to match the zoning that we're working on right now behind the scenes. And then you'll, so nothing major, nothing significant. When you look at that pretty color graph that shows R1 over here, commercial over here, we're doing some minor tweaks. And then we have the transportation circulation element that we're working on right now behind the scenes. And so those are some major components that are behind the scenes that are, that are coming forward to you. And then, and then the rest of the documents is having a high level update for state law and just making sure it's consistent with some current policies that will come to you. So as far as throwing it out and starting over and having public meetings to say, you know, I don't, I think we need to have this public property or this, you know, residential R2, we don't have any immediate plans for that. We're really just doing these kind of specific updates and then we're doing a high level cleanup, some old stuff.
Based on the plan is, and I don't want to get too deep because it's a budget, but it relates to the expense of perhaps updating the plan, that's why I'm asking the question. And if it were to be completely, all, all of it brought up to date, it would take, take at least a year or more and the expense could be a 1.75 million, a 1.7500?
I've heard.
Say 1.7 million plus.
I've heard high numbers, up to a couple million bucks.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah, I think recently the county did theirs a few years back and they were in that, that range and then Marysville's working through one right now.
Yeah, and that's, I'm, I'm just curious why, why we're just kind of piecing it and not taking out of it. I'm, I'm just curious.
I think we actually have a pretty decent.
Do we?
We, I think we have a pretty decent plan. It's, you know, getting into this position over the last couple of years and getting into it and talking to some of the professionals, there was definitely outreach and there's policies in there that, that I think matched the city's current needs. But they just need to be refreshed and kind of fine tuned on some of those. And so that's what, instead of throwing it out and starting anew, I think it's really, hey, let's look into it and fine tune what we have.
Okay, I don't want to take up more on time on that, but.
And so that's where, we have 985 in the bank on it. I think we could get away for a little bit, you know, as far as putting in $200,000 a year, you know? And then if there are any issues, I'm definitely always open because we're constantly doing updates that we could look at what we need to modify or if there's a general plan policy that we, that we don't think jives with our current stance.
I'm just thinking because of a lot of areas of infill and. Other parts of our city that could possibly be commercial, that is not commercial. So just for those, you know, growth areas that haven't been, I guess, looked at and I'll take a closer look at the plan myself, but thank you.
And definitely we're open, we're open to input and we get, we get an opportunity up to four times a year to, to change it. And so, so through that, if there is a property owner or if there's a specific site that wants to update and change the land use, and the council definitely has that option continuously. I know Shannon, it really is kind of the secret general plan guru probably here. Shannon, I don't know if you have anything to add about the general plan?
They're expensive for a city this size, has been pointed out. And these can defer those costs and at least get the same benefit by sometimes spreading them across several budget years. And that's a common practice that a lot of cities do in order to cover that cost because a couple million dollars is a, it's a big pill to swallow all at once.
All right, facilities projects. The, the big highlight here is, is 305,000 for improvements to buildings and grounds. There's some various, staff works with engineering to kind of lay out some of the critical needs. And so this year, they, they put some numbers together for the courtyard gutters, some Madden house, some repairs of the fire station doors and police station roof. And so it's, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's a decent sized money and little projects to work through. And then with the city hall improvements, a lot of that 160,000 has to do with council security, council chamber security improvements and, and various small projects at city hall. Okay, so, yeah, community services projects. And so this is really, this, this is Brad's piggy bank here, that engineering and public works kind of works on putting out. And so these are a lot of good projects, you know, from the annual playground replacement to zero depth entry feature, senior center improvements, the various, the funding that's proposed here with, with improvements at San Brandon Park. And so it's really focused on improving infrastructure such as the town center or approving facilities with the senior, for helping with the senior population at the senior center, improving the playground equipment at various locations, creating opportunities for the special needs children. San Brandon Park, there are some improvements with the, with the bocce ball courts being proposed for, and then even some opportunities for our four-legged friends with the dog park. So, so there's some, some fun stuff coming through with, with the community service budget items. Public safety projects, this really is typically anything police department or fire department oriented. A couple of the key items there are fire station number four, the training grounds and the police department evidence storage building. And so for the evidence storage building, it's kind of phase two of the parking lot improvements there. We had the parking lot and the solar, and then there's an area there that's, that's been designated for a future storage building site. It sounds like they're proposing to use ARPA funding. So the, so some of the, so the funding sources, I should note, in the, in the CIP, as you go through it, at the bottom of the sheets, it'll break down the funding sources depending on the project. And, and that's where you could figure out, you could look at it as far as if it's a federal grant, if it's water, wastewater, or where the, where the funding source is coming from. And then the fire station for training grounds, that's notable with, with some efforts made towards an usable training tower with some, with some containers. Okay, streets and roads. This is really, at a high level, the big projects are Bridge Street widening right now for the team and then the Walton Avenue improvements. That's really where we're focusing efforts over the next couple of years here with, with other funding being programmed with us starting to put, put a little money away and gear up for the Tully Parkway extension. And then we have some, some funding sources, they aren't huge in what things cost nowadays, but for road rehab, this SB one money and then residential road rehab money is, is usually some gas tax dollars that are left over. So between there, there's about a million, two, a million bucks for road rehab, slurry seals, micros, some resurfacing around town. We, we do an annual ADA improvement project for sidewalk curb returns, but, but really the big effort again is Bridge Street, Walton and then Tully Parkway in the future. Those are the grant dollar amounts. And so with those, it's key to, key to, to recognize that the, the city, in order to get that these type of numbers, we're really relying on grants and other regional money that we could pull in. And so with Bridge Street, there's a CTC grant for 2.8 million and then with Walton Avenue, we had a SAICOG grant for 4 million bucks. Water projects, so all things water right now, a couple of the big ones that really, I would say are key that, that staff is working on is the second groundwater well. So you have, you have a US Board of Reclamation grant that we have $750,000 that we're working on the second groundwater well before council authorized bid on phase one the other night. And then what's, what's, what's new here is we're programming the six point, 6.5 approximately that has to do with the ASR component that we just received from DWR. And so as we work through that, most likely we'll come to council with, create a separate CIP account for the ASR and then I identify the funding for it and kind of the timeline, we'll, we'll, we'll update that. And then you have really the water treatment plant's priority project is the electrical and instrumentation upgrade. So if you're up there, their, their equipment, everything instrumentation, electrical is old and it's in need of upgrades. And so really that's starting to put money into this pot so we could start getting efforts going to do an RFP, determine the design, scope of the work in a similar project regarding the instrumentation update compared to what we did at the wastewater plant. And then you have notable that's in this, under this division of funds is the Plumas Water Tower Maintenance Project. So this is that recent grant we, we received from Clean California, a state grant, which not only just the note that it doesn't include just the water tower maintenance isn't 2.2 million, the water tower component's really 800,000, but the total project for some improvements to the, to the area below it for parks, center street is gonna total that amount. Okay, wastewater projects. So some, so some big numbers out here and you could see this is future, 40 million bucks. And so that's really that new outfall diffuser. Right now, this year, we're, we're putting $300,000 in, of money to kind of get us through the final design. And then as we work through the environmental and the permits, finalize those. But really, this is the big number that we're after through the SRF program and working with the state to bring in through some sort of grant opportunity if available. So to be determined on that number. And then your other big items really are this Harder Bridge sewer trunk and your Bog Road sewer extension. So those projects Diana brought forward in the past regarding using some ARPA money is critical components to help with, with our infrastructure and also for future economic positioning, I would say. So those are some priority projects for, for wastewater. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you, Mayor. Ben, the only thing, I think you and I talked already, but just to share this with, with fellow council members is as we move along with the outfall diffuser and with our grant consultant and all that, if you can bring us up to date on the process of where we're at with that discussion with DWR and the state water board so we can all be on the same page of the information as is, you know, as we're making some headway hopefully. And if, if. at with that discussion with DWR and the State Water Board, so we can all be on the same page of the information as is, you know, as we're making some headway hopefully. And if, if you or others get stuck, then please, you know, let me know, or, or council, anyone else, to help move, move along the, the process. And if we're hopefully successful, we'll know towards the end of the year or sometime around this time next year.
Absolutely, I'm happy to do that. I'm going to meet with the grant, so with our grant consultant Blaze, we have a bi-monthly call, and so tomorrow, I'm going to have a meeting and check in, and then I'll have a little bit more information regarding the schedule that I could share with the council. And so for, for the SRF, for the state revolving grant cycle, they're due in December, and like you said, the expectation is how they come out this time next year, but I'm hoping to have a little bit more information on the process and the schedule that I could then share with, with everybody.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
You have questions, comments? Seeing none, I think we're, we're at the end. Mr. Morrison, do you have anything else to add, sir?
No, thank you for your, for your direction, and we'll plan to bring recommendations forward in the form of a resolution and staff report on the first meeting in June, I believe that's June 7th. And so there will be another opportunity for discussion, of course, and then we'll take that, that direction from June 7th and make that the adopted, the adopted budget, which we'll get to you as soon as we're able to get it pulled together for you into a book form. But this information for public consumption will be posted onto the finance website on the city's, ubacity.net, and we'll have a special section with these materials, so public can view them later. And then we also plan to communicate this information to city, employee, city staff in the morning as well. There's an item C after...
Yeah, no, I know.
Okay.
I just needed to know if there was anything that you had left in your part there. So we will move to public comment, and we have one written request, and that is Heather Esman, you have five minutes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I know that last name's, I didn't think it, it just kind of came with the guy. So first of all, I think Spencer, is this your first year doing the whole process? Correct, no? Oh, okay. Because I, I mean, the whole process, the whole year, I, maybe you came in at some point, so, but anyways, I'm, I am really impressed, I was thinking that there's going to be a lot of slashing and stuff, but particularly in, in one of the areas that I'm really fond of, and that's the, the community services because of the parks and everything. So I'm pivoting a little bit because I've seen that there's some issues on here, or some, not issues, some things on here that we're kind of fixing what I was going to talk about, but I'll, I'll basically write to some of you individually about that. I have an idea for something that's 50, 800 dollars, so. And I was one of those at the meeting at the, I think you were talking about the district forum meeting, so, and actually, I think I was the only person from the public, everybody else looked like they were either employees from the county, or it was Carmine's wife.
I was from, I was from the county community.
Oh, that's true, I guess. I thought you were trying to represent district four, but the, I, I think with that meeting, it just, it kind of came suddenly, and people weren't prepared for that. So I, I do think that that's a possibility, because you were talking about 50, 800 dollars. But anyway, so I know that community services usually, you know, it isn't safety, it isn't the water in the sewer, it's one of those kind of afterthoughts, but it's definitely a service that needs to be addressed and has to be worked on. And I've been, first of all, I'm, I'm really glad that we're able to get Collins Corner done, because that's definitely a unique area, and it's sorely needed in our community, because I don't think we have anything like that. As well as making sure that the money's there for us to connect bike path to the new park, thank you for that, because I, I do see that as a, as a potential for problems with kids trying to go down that way if they're riding to school or something like that, to that high school, for example. So I'm glad to see that that was also put in there, and in particular, the, the Moore Park, Morley Park, I don't know what it's called. That's been kind of something that I've, I've been thinking about and hoping that we'd be able to implement, particularly since the, the Bridge Street is being worked on right now, and Moore Park is on the corner of Cooper and, and Bridge, and it just seemed to be kind of like an afterthought. I mean, you know, you have to have money for it, I get that, and even though there's money budgeted for that, I am going to try diligently to see if we can't, maybe through design or something else, see if we can't get that a little bit lower, or see if we can't do some additional fundraising for, in the community, to see if we can't get something from individuals. For example, there's lovely little pictures with little cutouts, people can, can maybe buy and put their, the name of their, their dog on it or something like that, is what's done in some of the other communities. So I, I just, I don't know how I can say thank you so much for, for, for not leaving this, slashing this and leaving this on the, on the floor somewhere. It's something that I, I'm hoping that the community will be able to come together, because there's one thing, you know, dog lovers, that when there's dogs there and they're playing, it's really hard to argue, you know? It's really hard to, to be unhappy and to be argumentative with each other. There's a lot of other things that, in the community that they tend to do, right? We've got, we've got a situation, if you start talking about national politics or anything else, and then people tend to get, seem to get argumentative, but it's really hard to do that when their dogs are playing, you know? It's just too cute. So I'm hoping that that will bring together the community and will also help that area. So please, I know it's not final, please don't slash it. I'm going to try really hard to see if we can't get enough money to, to put it in there and make it something that's really special, fundraising, whatever, okay? But I just wanted to thank you all for, for, for doing that, not just for me, but for the community, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Then we will bring it back to council for closing comments or final questions. Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm like, no, yes, no, yes. I, I just thank you to, to Spencer, to Lynn, to the finance team, to the ad hoc committee members, and, and the executive team and everyone else that assisted and participated in pulling all of this budget. It seems, I, I think that to say that we've been here since 5 o'clock and to give it an hour and 40 minutes of, wow, you, we have a balanced budget and we have some great ideas of where to spend it, I cannot say that I have, you know, looked through it in my own time, but that our ad hoc committee, the endless hours of Spencer and Lynn and the finance team, Kevin and others, and the E-team, it's just beyond, it's months, weeks for preparation to make it seem very flawless and easy for the presentation and the discussion for us to cover, and hopefully those that are watching know that it, they, our team does an amazing job in putting all of this together. We ask for ways that we can digest it, and hopefully that helps the rest of the community digest and understand how we are bringing, how revenue comes in, and then how we expend the revenue, and we do this with a lot of, you know, responsibility, and I am so thankful. Spencer, Lynn, everyone, ad hoc, council member Boongard, I was going to call you vice president, but vice mayor.
One thing I can't do it all right.
And thanks so much for, for all the work. But Diana, thanks for your leadership and continued, and Ben, I always enjoy your presentations. They're just, they're like, they're, I love everyone's presentations, there's just much, there's a layer of, of bin-ness to it, and that makes me very happy, there's a lot of joy to it. So thank you, everyone, and that's all I got, Mayor.
Councilmember Harris, final thoughts, comments?
Yeah, nothing really, it was very thorough presentation and going through the paperwork as, as always, the, the work and the attention to detail that you guys put into it is obvious and much appreciated. Just leave it at that, thank you very much.
Councilmember Boongard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I, I pointed out a lot of thanks to other folks, but I think I forgot to thank Diana, Ms. Langley, for refereeing the process. No flags were thrown, we didn't have to go under review for any, any missed calls or anything like that, so thank you for that. You know, I, when, as a resident, not just as a city councilperson, I look at the work that, that we've done over the last four years of taking a look at the budget hand-in-hand with department heads, that's not something that I think should be taken lightly. We, we approach things as a group, we're fiscally conservative, and it's positioned us well to navigate through what could potentially be some rough waters without having to go back out to the public and say, give me more. We're okay right now. That doesn't mean we're going to be okay in the future, but right now, City of Ubah City is okay. My head hits the pillow at night knowing that we're funding the essential services, we're funding some of the quality of life things that we talked about, and, and we do so with an eye on being the best that we can possibly be within our ability to pay. So appreciate the, the work with the vice mayor, and during the headlight looks a couple of times, but man, I tell you what, he was engaged, so that was, that was good. And, you know, the, the groundwork that Councilman Harris and the mayor did at the very first year, I think, set the stage for this thing to go the way it did up, up until this year. And Spencer, thank you for being patient with my deep dive into the budget. I know that that probably was a knuckleball, might even have been a pitch in the dirt, but thank you very much, I appreciate it. And Lynn, gonna miss you, I'm glad that we're able to keep you on for a bit. Diana, nice to have you here as well. You got a couple of good people there to, to help you navigate through your transition here to the City of Ubah City. Welcome aboard, thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Through the mayor, thank you. I think it's all been said. A great job, there's a ton of work that went in this, and we'll see you again next year.
I will close it out with just a few comments, and first of all, thank you to the ad hoc committee, because setting on it, I know the countless hours that you guys engage, and as, as you said, Mark, it's, it's not something that's really customary to prior councils, they didn't do the deep dives into the budget, but we've linked up, we understand it, and in the long term, I think it helps us understand each other. And then it also to Esman, Ms. Esman, did I get it correct? Great. I don't mean to butcher it, we got two people in the room that are really close last names, and I, I flip and flop, and Sam's not here tonight, but my apologies, but I, I think as you come to know this council and the community comes to know this council more, you'll see that this, those deep dives, and there's more than just what's going on right now. This has been a three-and-a-half-year process that we embarked on to really get to where we are, to where we can add different things and do things. So Ms. Langley, thank you. Master cat herder, absolutely guarantee that. Spencer, thank you for everything you've done. Lynn, likewise, awesome work over all the years that you've worked as a part of this team. Welcome to our team. And Spencer, I will, I will personally leave you with two words for Lynn's last day, guaranteed to make your life easier, because she's going nowhere, duct tape, okay? Just saying. To the chair. To the rest of the department heads, you guys are incredible, and know that we are trying to do everything we can to make this, this team even stronger and better than it, than it was when we got here three years ago. You guys are an incredible team, and it's an honor for the five of us to sit up here and, and really serve you while we're all serving the, the citizens of Ubah City. So last question I have for Spencer is if there are any questions that we may come up with as we continue to dive through this before June 7th, would you like those emailed directly to you and CC Ms. Langley, or go to her and, and you'll forward them? How would you like those handled?
They can be sent to Spencer.
Okay, so if the council has any questions, email Spencer, CC Ms. Langley, and then in the responses, making sure we all have the right information, we'll make sure that it gets sent to all five council members. And with that, that is probably a record for the budget workshop, but before we go anywhere, Mr. Chaffin, you're raising your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I'd like the record to reflect that Councilmember Harris was here and was here for most of the hearing, probably came in about 15 after, so just wanted to make sure that he was on the roll, was being present. Thank you.
Does that work for you, 5:15, 5:07?
5:00.
All right, sounds good. If there's no more comments, then we will stand adjourned.